Okay, good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 11th day of November 2021. Welcome all of our guests here this evening and get right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda being, let's let the newspaper in. Somebody want to let the newspaper in? I just started the meeting and I said the first item on the agenda is let's let the newspaper in. Welcome, Mike. Okay, back to the first item on the agenda, it's consideration of the council minutes of the meeting that we held on October 25th of 2021.
Move to approve, like the reading second.
Okay, we have a motion. The motion is to waive the reading, council, are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they appeared in your packet? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Public comment, nobody signed up. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of 2021-2022 general fund budget revision. And council, this is, we're adding $10,000 to the Somersville Fire Department. You'll see that that's being added to their capital outlay, of which there's $10,000 in there already. That $10,000 is a contribution that we got thankfully from the Somersville Rotary Club as they are pretty much the catalyst and the champions behind the rescue boat that we have. And it was time to replace the dinghy boat, so the Rotary donated $10,000 of the $22,000 that it took to replace that boat. That other 10,000 that we laid in capital outlay was anticipation that we were going to get the other 10 from the Rotary, of which we did, so now it brings the 20,000. The total boat with accessories was about 22,000. The department's pulling the balance out of their regular budget. So $10,000 from the Rotary, added to capital outlay in the Fire Department, I entertain the motion to approve.
Move to approve, second.
We got a first and a second, are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. The next thing, council, I'll tell you in a very excited way, I got notified actually the day before last week, I believe it was Wednesday, I met the governor in Craigsville. He was on his way actually to Pocahontas County, so he met a bunch of us in Craigsville. We actually met at the Craigsville PSD where the governor was giving out a bunch of money. And I was a proud recipient on behalf of the city of Somersville to receive a hazard mitigation, a flood grant to repair, to do some stormwater repair here in the city of Somersville. And quite frankly, I got to tell you, it's a project that I know myself, I've been involved with the state with well over a decade. And it was so good to see that in 2016, some additional funds become aware, that were actually earmarked for the counties that were hit the hardest with the flood. So we applied for a hazard mitigation grant to take care of Kentucky Road. And last week, I picked up a grant that was awarded through the state, that's actual federal monies of $1,042,350 for that flood project on Kentucky Road. And anybody that's ever traveled that road, anytime we get heavy rain, knows how bad it floods, it's awful. So this is exciting that we finally have some money. We actually some time back did a engineer selection process, and so Thrasher Engineering has already been, you know, actually they're the kind of, that's the engineer firm that helped us put this together to try to identify what the project costs were going to be. So it's exciting to finally get the money and going to see the stormwater project to take care of the flood issue that we have on Kentucky Road anytime we get heavy rains. So thank you to the state and also for allowing us to get this project done and then of course the monies come through the federal government. So I just wanted to give everybody an update. I did immediately reach out to Thrasher Engineering last week after receiving the money, and they've already set everything in motion to try to get right onto the project. Got a call today to identify some of the details yet that are to be done to actually receive the money, all that's underway. And again, so I want to thank the state and also our partner Region Four who helped us get the grant in, and then of course they're going to manage, you know, manage the process from the standpoint of the financials. So it's always great to receive those funds and get another project done here in the city of Somersville. The next item I want to talk about is, and I kind of got a monologue here that I want to go by to not get too lengthy. You know, back some time ago, council, in executive session, I brought to you all an idea with a property location, I brought it to this governing body, the idea about moving forward potentially with the sports complex to include many outdoor recreational activities. Of course, immediately all of you jumped on board, and to be quite fair, you all, many of you have always had the same idea and concept that this is what the city of Somersville needed to do. So collectively as a body unanimously, you all supported it and authorized me to move forward, you know, with the process. And of course, at that time, we all decided, yep, this is something we need to do. As a matter of fact, it's a long overdue need for our community. So although we have not nailed down or executed any contract on the said property that's under negotiation and kind of earmarked for this project, you know, some people have figured it out and that's fine because there's mapping, but we're still sensitive to releasing the exact location as to keep traffic down on the property until the city secures it. And then even at that point in time, hopefully our project will be underway, so we'll still probably try to keep down the traffic that we get on the property. But due to the fact that we don't have any contractual arrangement yet on the property, we're not actually saying where the property's at, but you all authorized me to move forward with the project and to determine feasibility and cost. So therefore, by authorization of this body, I moved forward, again engage Region Four as a partner, and the city of Somersville put out a notice of request for engineering services. And it's to be located in Nicholas County, West Virginia, in the process of obtaining services of consulting engineer in regards to design of a 90-acre recreational park to include soccer fields, baseball and softball fields, walking, biking, mountain biking, playground and dog park. Design will also include roads, stormwater and miscellaneous structures supporting recreational activity. So we did move forward with that. As a matter of fact, that advertisement went out and information to any interested party had been received at City Hall by 4:00 PM on October 29th, 2021, which was last month. I will tell you that we had seven firms respond and have submitted packages. So with that said, I selected the review committee. Of course, I'm sitting on this one. I've got Councilman Chuck Shaw sitting on it, Councilman Stevie LaRose sitting on it, city superintendent James Corbett and citizen Mike LeYoung. The five of us have already been issued the seven submitted packets, of which I'm hoping that, and Stevie, I didn't get ahold of you yet, I'm hoping that we can all have those scored, we've all got individual scorecards. You do that individually, you go through, read each proposal and score it. We've all got scorecards, I'm hoping to have all the scorecards turned in by Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And then of course, Thursday's a holiday, holiday, city will be closed. And then I'm hoping to have a meeting at 10:00 AM on Friday morning for the five of us to determine the top two or three firms that we will actually personally interview. And then of course, I hope to have those interviews set up the following week and a firm selected that following week. The whole idea and concept behind that is, I've already put into full swing the grant application process, engaging both Region Four and our city grant writer. We are well underway formulating the required information. And so I want to kind of give an overview, as this right here is just a rough sketch to kind of give a rough idea of potentially some of the things that we want to do, but this is not an engineered sketch at all, it's just a rough draft. But the property boundaries on that property is accurate to the 90 acres that we potentially will secure for said park. So I've set in the motion committees, some of them I have formed, some of them I am still forming. As a matter of fact, the soccer committee is completely formed and being chaired by Jeremy Bandy. I'm still working on the baseball, softball, the hiking, biking, the playground, and then of course, I've got set aside miscellaneous for other activities that could be included in this park. And the whole idea and concept is, is to not have one huge committee getting a whole bunch of people together trying to make things happen, it's to break it out into sections. And then of course, there will be a mother committee, and that is yet to be formed as well. Ideally, what's happening right now is the grant writers need from these individual committees, information that will be put into the grant. And so in a very excited way, all of that is underway, a lot of behind the scenes action taking place. And the other thing I wanted to do is, back in the time, I was strongly encouraged to submit a earmark grant application, of which I did. And I did with the idea and concept of this park through Senator Manchin's office, and I'm still waiting to hear on that. I understand now they're starting to release leaked information on potential projects that will get earmarked monies. You know, this is a truly exciting, long overdue project. First and foremost, it's going to benefit our local youth all the way to our seniors. If we do this right, we're going to have activities for all ages, walking, biking, hiking, playground, dog park, all of it. So it's inclusive to all ages. The other thing that's critical that we display in this grant applications, application process, it's going to get super competitive and there's a lot of different angles to go at it, but we also need to display in a big way, and we're working on that, that this will have a direct impact to tourism and our economy. So there's a lot of boxes to check, we're working on that. I think we've got some great people engaged, and of course, you know, the big thing right now is, is that we've got to get an architect engineer firm identified to start putting some pencil to paper, bring some of this, formulate it, what can we do with the property? And then ultimately getting us some, some cost tied to what this project's going to cost. So exciting, so exciting for our area, and as I've well stated several times, it's long overdue. Anybody else want to add anything to that? Okay, and again, council, I tell you, if anybody, if I've said anything tonight that sparks an interest and you're interested in playing a role, I encourage you to get in touch with me. Certainly, we've still got some vacancies on some things that we could use help with, as well as I'm still reaching out to citizens. Long before this project even come to fruition, my door had been knocked on by many citizens of whom I'm contacting now to put on some of these committees. So we want to be inclusive, it's not a government project, it's a community project. So I truly am reaching out to as many citizens as I can on these individual committees to make sure that they're formulated from the voices of our community. Not only that, in having the soccer committee meet with the grant people this past week, it was important too that I communicated to them, go out, go back to your people and bring us as much information as you can. So I'm real excited about this. I believe one way or another, because of the unanimous support of this behind this entire body sitting right here, we're going to make this happen. So anyway, exciting times.
The only thing I would say on engineer, I'm sure, has got the parking, enough parking for the whole complex, that's a big deal.
Yep, absolutely.
When do you expect the engineer report?
I don't, actually, so that we can meet, and like I say, that's why it's so urgent, we've really put it on the fast track, our grants have to go in in January. These grants have to be in January. And quite frankly, I was told last week when we did meet, that we probably won't know for sure on our big grants until about June, if we're, if we're selected. So, but yes, we have to get, you know, the engineer, when we do our interview, once we narrow it down and select, the engineer's going to know that they've got about a 30-day window, that they've got to get out there and do some serious work to identify that property, how it could be used, and then come back with some numbers. Initially, that concerned me, but as, you know, the advertising for engineering that went out, I was actually the contact for it and was contacted by many firms just for general information, even did any of them that contacted us kind of floated them this map, this topo map that, you know, with an idea of the lay of the land. And, you know, so I would anticipate that the ones that potentially are selected will come in already with a good idea, do some homework already, and I've done some homework on, you know, this, this piece of land, on what can be done. So, but we have to have some numbers by the end of December because the grant applications are due in January. So that's kind of why with this selection committee, we put it on the fast track, and we should have an engineering firm identified. If everything goes well, by next week, by next week. Okay, recorder's report.
Everybody should have to follow that, but that was quite a report right there, great news for the city. Just want to remind everybody of the 29th meeting of planning and zoning to address the comprehensive plan, and that'll be at six, six o'clock here in the chamber. I will put that on Zoom again, so if anybody wants to watch it on Zoom, that would be great.
Okay, mayor's report, council, let me give you some updates on some stuff. The demolition of 433 Ashley Lane, we actually received four bids. We got a bid from Holcomb Construction, it was 9,400. We got a bid from Reclaim, which was the same folks that did the, the building here on Main Street for $16,900. Mike Polstowake Construction came in at $12,553.12, and the bid was awarded to Tom Bell's Construction, which came in at $8,900. I will tell you that we plan to engage Bell's Construction in the demolition and give them a 30-day window, which they've certainly said they could comply with. As a matter of fact, they were ready to move equipment up there and get started, but what we have to do is, we're still waiting for the foreclosure paperwork to come through from the bank, which means the bank, they haven't filed it yet with the county. I will tell you Greg Tucker, our city attorney's already done a deed search and the deed is cleared. So the property's clear, we just have to wait for the foreclosure paperwork to be filed on behalf of the bank before, and this is advisement of our attorney, don't go up there and do it and tell that because that kind of makes it final with the bank and our purchase. As I explained to you last month, we've paid the $9,000 down, we still owe the balance to the property. So in a roundabout way, we're going to have $25,000 in the property, somewhere thereabouts. And I feel without a doubt, we get that cleared, get it filled in and, and, you know, seeded, and that property's going to be worth easily 25,000. Once we get all that done, I'll come back to you with authorization or advice, because it's really not us to do it, it's the building commission, because the property was purchased in the building commission. But I still think what we should do is recommend to them that we don't make money on it, we don't put it out for auction and try to make money on it, we get out of it what we've got on it, what we've got in it. So I still think the idea of have people produce, if they can close it in 30 days for the property and then do a drawing and let somebody win it that way that's going to build a house on it, that's the fairest way to do it. Because otherwise, we get into bid war, we make money and we don't need to make money on the property. If anybody's got any other idea, again, we don't control that process, we can make recommendations to the building commission, they actually control that process. Wanted to give you an update on vaccines, you know, we paid stipends to our vaccines. When we started out, the city was at 52% and the Fire Department was at 64% in an excited way, and it's exciting to me, we picked up four city employees by paying the stipend. So now our city stands at 60% vaccinated and our Fire Department stands at 77% vaccinated. So we picked up four in the city and the Fire Department picked up three. Also, council, just kind of want to give you a heads up, I do anticipate that we may have to go back at some point in time and look at reallocating some funding from maybe even contingency or somewhere else in the budget, because some of our budget line items in fuel costs are running up against it, i.e. particularly the Police Department with the increase, unanticipated increase of fuel costs, we are seeing some issues in the budget because of what we are spending on fuels, at some point we may need to come back and readdress that. I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on that right now. Passed up and down the line here, we did receive a thank you from the Bread of Life for the additional $5,000 contribution that we gave them on the last carry forward, another good project, you know, they do many good things, and so I just wanted to let you know and let the community know that we're appreciative when we do give and we receive thank yous. Want to back up and tell you about, let me, let me go to that last. Also want to tell you, council, that we're going to have a live nativity scene downtown Somersville, and this is going to be on November 11th from, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. It's actually going to be the Mountain State Baptist Church, and, and they partner not only with the city using city property, but many businesses. And so the loop that comes down Broad Street, goes down Main Street, around by U-Save, and then back up Water Street, that entire loop around that loop from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on November 11th will be a live nativity scene, using the courthouse, our property and businesses all through there. I think when it shakes out, it's going to be a pretty neat deal. November, ah, November, thank you.
Dead as a worm.
Thank you, December, December, December 11th. God, I'm glad you caught that, December 11th. Yeah, it's December 11th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and that's a Saturday. Let me make sure that's right, it's December 11th, the Saturday, yes. Okay, got the date right, thank you, Mike. December 11th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and it's going to be a really neat deal, as a matter of fact, down on the corner with U-Save, going to be a lot of live animals and it should really shake out to be a neat deal and bring the spirit of the holiday to our city. So December 11th, 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Also, council, I want to let you know, today, we went through our annual renewal with EBS and Bill Dyer, who handle our city's health insurance. I will tell you that our fixed cost went up 8% and the overall cost, which is what we contribute and, and you know, because remember, we have a $30,000 deductible or we have a self-insurance fund and per person, so our overall cost is taken about claims and fixed cost about a 2% increase. And of course, that's all tabulated by what we should set aside for claims and, and our fixed cost. I will tell you that even today, once again, we're told that it's unbelievable how well our plan is, how well it's managed and how well it's funded. A check before I came today, we are just shy $700,000 in our self-insurance fund, which is money that belongs to the city that we keep to pay those claims that we pay. We had another incredible year, and, and actually, even the increase that we're taking is substantially lower than most in the industry, and that's just kind of like an increase you take, and it's not reflection of our company paying any claims, because last year, we didn't have anybody, we didn't even have anybody that got into that second level, that tier that the insurance company pays any claims. Everything that we paid last year was completely handled by our self-insurance fund. So again, another great report on the fund. They actually even recommended that we might increase our self-insurance deductible to $35,000. I looked at the, the situation, I did not, I will not bring it forward because what I always worry about is you get down the road, those of you that served on the hospital board, you'll remember this real well, that deductible got high in years when it was recommended, they took it, then you get a bad year and you really get hammered, and now you hear you got this high deductible, and guess what you can't ever do? Can't ever go backwards, it's hard to go backwards, because in most cases, if you get in a situation where your risk pool changes, not only will they not let you go backwards, they want you to go up. So we're going to keep it at the 30,000. But anyway, another good annual review. The last thing I wanted to remind everybody about, and I think it's very important, it's this week, it's Thursday, National Holiday Veteran Day, and I just kind of wanted to, to, to read a little, I made some notes here about Veterans Day. Unfortunately, as we live in this world, we do today, we're getting away from history and education, it bothers me, it bothers me about statues and schools and all this renaming that's taking place in this country. I think there's a place and time that our history served well, I also believe that we've learned good and bad from history, but I just wanted to give you some history. The ceremony on Thursday starts at 11:11 AM. And sometimes people wonder, why is it 11:11 AM? And that's because World War II, at the end of World War II, on November 11th of 1918, the Armistice was signed on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month.
November, World War I.
World War I, what'd I say? Gosh, Mike, I'm glad you're here tonight, World War I. What is wrong with me, World War I, you're exactly right. So yes, on World War I, man, I am really screwing up tonight, World War I, it was November 11th, 1918, the 11th hour, 11th day of 11th month. Now, I learned some stuff by researching this, because of course, it was originally celebrated as Armistice Day, and then it wasn't until 1954, on October 8th, that President Dwight Eisenhower issued the first proclamation calling November 11th Veterans Day. But it wasn't, that wasn't the name of the day, it was just, he did a proclamation saying Veterans Day. Now oddly enough, because he did it in October, I never knew this, but between 1954 and 1975, the date was actually sometimes celebrated in October, it was all around the place. Matter of fact, at some point in time, it was celebrated Veterans Day or Armistice Day was October 25th. It wasn't until 1975, the President Ford signed into law that beginning in 1978 going forward, that Veterans Day, the national holiday, would be on November 11th. Kind of some interesting history there, I had no idea that there was even a period that it wasn't in November, it was in October. So, and then what I found odd too, is that President Ford signed by law in 1975, but it didn't take effect until 1978. So since 1978, it's been on November 11th that we've celebrated Veterans Day at 11:11 AM. So I encourage everybody, all our citizens, everybody to get out So I encourage everybody, all our citizens, everybody to get out and partake in Veterans Day. And boy, do we owe a debt of gratitude to the many men and women that have served this country, especially those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, their lives. And it's not only those that have served, but their families that have made sacrifices. So a salute to them on all of our behalves, and I can't say enough that I hope we get a good turnout at this year's Veterans Day ceremony. That concludes the mayor's report. Let me make sure.
What about the Thanksgiving dinner?
Oh, yes, good point. Jim, the Thanksgiving dinner, that is actually on November eighteenth and this year it's at the Arena and Conference Center. It's from eleven A M. to one P M. And that's the city of Somersfield, this body right here, creating a day of fellowship. Actually was started before I come into office, which was back in two thousand and seven. This was actually started under the Atkins administration. I always give credit where credit's due. I think it's a great time to get together, be thankful and fellowship. So it's from eleven A M. to one P M. I want to let everybody know, it's going to be in the arena this year, plenty of room for social distancing and also if you're a shut-in or homebound, you can call the conference center at eight seven two, three seven two two and order your meal and it will be delivered. Jim, thank you for bringing that up. And this body right here is going to be serving.
And Mayor, you want us there about ten thirty?
Uh, yes, please, about ten thirty. Yeah, because you know, people get there early and when they get there early, they're ready to eat. So yeah, so looking forward to that. Jim, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, because I actually wouldn't have had an opportunity to say that because it would have been after the fact for our next meeting. So, okay, any other, any other council comments or did I miss anything else, counsel? Or did I screw up any other dates? Oh, I did miss something, I just, as I look down here, my thing. Actually, I wanted to thank all the businesses that participated in the safe zone. I didn't, I wasn't able to attend, but I was told it was very successful and they kind of do a head count and believe it or not, they had over a thousand kids come through the safe zone at the conference center. So that's a lot of kids, yeah. So, and, and we had a whole bunch of businesses. So again, that's another well display of partnerships here in the city of Somersfield, the city, the conference center, the C V B. and all those businesses that participated. Thanks to everybody, it was very successful. I promise now that concludes the mayor's reports. Any council reports? Here you go, I'll entertain the motion to move into executive session. First and the second, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. And it is for the purpose of, I want to state that should be just stated in, whoops, I forgot. Well, so it's for the purpose of legal personnel or deliberative matters.